I'd like to call to order the meeting of 10 May 2018 to order, the planning board meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
2018 to order, planning board meeting to order. Please rise for my allegiance. It's an echo.
Yeah.
All right. Are there any changes to the May 10th agenda? All right, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll throw a motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, agenda passes. Disqualifications. In accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every planning board member to avoid conflicts of interest. Does any planning board member have any known conflict of interest with respect to any matters coming before the planning board today? All right, no disqualifications. Minutes, are there any changes to, well, the date of the last minutes was?
March 13.
March 13. Any changes to the March 13 minutes? I have no changes, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve the minutes is written.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, no changes and the minutes pass. Is there any old business? Oh, it is on there, look at that, we do have a quorum. Skipped right over that one, didn't I? We do have five members present, so we do have a quorum. All right, the first item on the agenda, PB 1810, Clifford C. Byram Jr. The presenter is Lori LaCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The item before you tonight is a text amendment to the UDO in the distillery, sorry, in the definition section to address craft distilleries. The applicant is not here tonight, but we were able to speak with him on the phone earlier, he's at his daughter's graduation. But Mr. Byram came to the county and wanted to open or begin the process to open a craft distillery here in Currituck County. We did have some language that addressed craft distilleries, but in the, in our, in the UDO, we defined craft distillery, it's not on here, as an establishment where spiritous liquor is produced on site and which shall include a tasting room in which guests or customers may sample the product. The building in which the craft distillery operates shall not exceed 4,000 square feet. Mr. Byram did, thought that that 4,000 square feet, he's looking at building a building here in the county, and that 4,000 square feet was a bit restrictive for him and also a little bit arbitrary, you know, the size of a building, although maybe in a more urban area, it would be a way to regulate how large a business can get in a, in a county or rural county like Currituck is on the mainland, maybe that's not a very good way to regulate it. Mr. Byram suggested that maybe regulating it using the definition from American Distilling Institute, that craft distillery shall not produce more than 52,600 cases annually. So that was his application and staff is supportive of this change, this text amendment. So I don't know if anyone has any questions for me at this point?
Planning board, do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, the only question I have are on that first page on the item one, are we changing that to the 52,000?
If this board so desires, yes.
Okay.
So when, when a motion is made?
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Any other questions for staff? And Lauren, was there anything that you want to discuss about this or we just want to go? Okay. All right, since there's no one here to present, I'll, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
I have some commentary.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Chairman, first.
Sorry, go ahead.
Upon further research, we found that the American Distilling Institute's production limit for craft distillery actually is 52,000 cases a year, not 52,600 like the applicant had stated. And likely, we will change that to mimic the website for the American Distilling Institute.
Any other comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve PB 1810 with the change to the numeric section of the craft distillery definition to reflect 52,000 cases annually instead of 52,600 cases because it's consistent with the goals, objectives, and the policies of the land use plan and other applicable county adopted plans. It's not in conflict with any provision of this ordinance or the county code of ordinances. And it addresses a demonstrated community need and it will not injure the public interest.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. And we'll move on to PB 1811, Julie Christian, Medical Aesthetics Tattooing. And if we have anyone here to present the case, please step up and state your name and address.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I don't have the paperwork. Jason Laurel told me he was actually going to be doing the presenting. Okay. And told me to be here to answer any questions.
That's fine, you can just state your name and address and then I'm just going to have Lori present the case.
Okay, my name is Julie Christian, I live at 222 Shingle Landing Road in Mooyant.
Thank you. You can have a seat while Lori's presenting the case.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead, Lori.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is another text amendment before the board tonight. Ms. Christian came to, to staff and wanted to open a medical aesthetics tattooing, or wanted to be allowed to do that, and we realized our unified development ordinance didn't really address medical aesthetic tattooing. We addressed tattooing, the typical body art tattooing, but we didn't address medical aesthetics tattooing. So Ms. Christian, along with staff, worked up a definition of medical aesthetics tattooing, modified the office professional services, tattoo parlors, and we added body art and medical aesthetics tattooing. So we are just changing Chapter 10, the definitions of, within the definitions. So in office professional services, we're adding medical aesthetics tattooing to, to that definition. And by adding that definition to professional services, it will allow medical aesthetics tattooing as a use in the MXR, the GB, our general business, our limited business, our community centers, and our village centers zoning districts. Regular tattooing, the body art that everybody thinks, is only allowed in our HI, our heavy industrial, and our light industrial. So we're adding that to the office professional services definition. We are also changing the tattoo parlor definition to be a little bit more specific, and that's going to read, "An establishment whose principal business activity is the practice of producing body art, including but not limited to the placing of designs, letters, figures, symbols, or other marks upon or under the skin of any person using ink or other substances that result in the permanent coloration of the skin by means of use or needles or other instruments designed to contact or puncture the skin." So we're changing, make those changes to tattoo parlor. And they were also defining body art with this text amendment, so that body art is now going to be in our definitions and it will read, "Art made on, with, or consisting of the human body. The most common forms of body art are tattoos and body piercings. Other forms include scarification, branding, subdermal implants, scalping, shaping, and body painting. Body art is decorative in nature and does not include medical aesthetics tattooing." And then, medical aesthetics tattooing, we've added that definition with this text amendment. And it is, the definition there is, "An advanced form of cosmetic tattooing performed by a permanent cosmetics technician. Services provided include, but are not limited to the following, the diminishing of the appearance of scar tissue due to traumatic injury, enhancement of lip symmetry due to a cleft lip, restoration of the areola complex, restoration of the appearance of hair loss due to alopecia, color restoration, permanent cosmetics, and, and then the final one, to differentiate between body art and medical aesthetics tattooing, is medical aesthetics tattooing does not include services as defined as body art." So this is a much-needed service for, for people with some rather intense medical conditions, and Ms. Christian would like to be able to operate in our community. And in doing so, this will, we add some definitions to our, to our UDO, and we also let this, by doing so, then this becomes an acceptable use in the, in Currituck County. And if anybody has any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for staff? If, I have one, if not.
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Am I correct, Lori, in stating that a tattoo parlor as of today does not have to have a use permit to operate?
Let me verify that. No, they are allowed with a simple zoning permit in our heavy industrial and light industrial.
Am I correct in saying that the applicant, if this is approved, would be able to apply similarly to have that business in their residence, if it is a residence in the GB zoning?
If it's, if it's a-
Should I say, what is the process by which the applicant has to be able to perform this service at their home?
They would, this would have to meet our definition of a home occupation, if they are going to do this, and we allow very limited services like this in the home occupation. They would be, this would be more geared towards, you know, the MXR, general business, limited business, things that are already kind of have a commercial designation. Now, she's able to do this and still meet our home occupation, we have 11 home occupation standards, but it would have to be very limited on the number of people that would-
In other words, I want to make sure we don't have an unintended consequence by allowing this, and if a home is in GB zoning, then that could be a conflict with the home occupation section.
It could be, and I'll get the standards, if you give me just a second here, I'll get the standards up for our home occupation. And I can read those to you if you guys aren't tired of me reading to you yet.
Not at all.
Oh, come on, I just had it, and then I scrolled and I lost it. A home occupation, home occupation shall be permitted as an accessory to any principal dwelling unit, provided that the accessory use will not change the character of the residential neighborhood in terms of appearance, noise, odors, traffic, or other impacts. Home occupations will be subject to the following standards, and here's 11 of those, let me The business or service is located within the dwelling or an associated accessory building and does not exceed 25% of the heated floor area of the principal structure or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less. The principal person or persons providing the business or service resides in the dwelling on the premises. The home occupation employs no more than one person on the premises who does not reside on the premises. The home occupation causes no change in the external appearance of the existing dwelling and other structure of the property. Retail sales of products produced on site shall be limited to lots with street frontage on major arterials. All vehicles used in connection with the home occupation are of a size and located on the premises in such a manner as to not disrupt the quiet, I scrolled too far again, nature and visual quality of the neighborhood, and there are no more than one vehicle per home occupation, and no instance shall any vehicle larger than eight feet by 32 feet be parked, stored, or otherwise maintained at the site of a home occupation. Home occupations shall not result in regular and ongoing vehicular traffic to the home where located. There is sufficient off-street parking for patrons of the home occupation with the number of off-street parking spaces required for the home occupation to be provided and maintained in addition to the space or spaces required for the dwelling itself. Up to one advertising sign shall be allowed, provided the sign does not exceed six square feet in area per side or more than four feet in height. No signage shall be illuminated or moving. The property contains no outdoor display or storage of goods, equipment, or services that are associated with the home occupation. The home occupation does not create traffic or parking congestion, noise, vibration, odor, glare, fumes, or electrical or communications interference which can be detected by normal senses off the premises, including visual or audible interference with a radio or television reception. So those are our 11 home occupation standards.
Would you mind reading the one about arterial? Must be fronting on arterial streets.
That was for the products, the retail products.
Products, right. Retail sales of products produced on site shall be limited to lots with street frontage on major arterial street.
Thank you. So it sounds like by those definitions, there would be no conflict with this if a, or this applicant or any other applicant that would come forward trying to do this same profession in their home if it were located in a GB, because we have many of those within our county, whereas GB or otherwise-
We have a significant number.
Make sure we don't have a conflict like we're going to be resolving on the next one.
Right. And this, you know, to me, the major one that they, she would have to adhere to would be, you know, that you're not creating regular and ongoing traffic. If she, you know, had several clients coming, you know, over a period of time or something, that may be an issue as far as, as a home occupation. But the applicant is here and there may be standards for this, this service that would be deterrent from, from locating in a home, or in a, in a house that's used as a residence, we, because we do have several, you know, homes that have been converted to businesses, truly, so.
Thank you.
I think mine is also relating to unintended consequences, under the definition of body art. I've been to a lot of tattoo parlors where they do cosmetic tattoos, and under body art, you specifically prohibit the, the permanent cosmetics. So at what point, I mean, a lot of the, the existing tattoo parlors are, are allowed to do like the eyebrows and the, the permanent cosmetics, but in this, in this ordinance, we're telling them they can't do that.
Well, I, I think the, the medical aesthetics tattooing is, is very specific in the definition. And I said, body art is decorative in nature, the body art definition, the last line there says, "Body art is decorative in nature and does not include medical aesthetics tattooing." You know, to me, if it's, it's, if it's more cosmetic, is decorative and not necessarily that falls under the qualifications of the definition of medical aesthetics tattooing, they would still be able to continue doing those things.
But I guess what I'm looking at is the, the strict definition that we've put down here on paper. We've said that the body art is decorative in nature and does not include medical aesthetics tattooing, and then right below that, we have a definition of medical aesthetics tattooing as one of them being permanent cosmetics. So we're telling them, in the definition of body art, you cannot do permanent cosmetics.
That would-
It could be some difficulty in policing it.
That's my point, yeah.
Yeah, that could be.
Depending on how strict one's interpretation is of the cosmetic aspect of it.
Right.
So if that's something that you would like to add a little more flexibility, see, that may be something to consider.
If you wanted to, Mr. Chairman, we could continue on.
Yeah.
And do this in the discussion after the-
Yeah, well, let's do that, we'll continue on and just have some discussion later, so.
That way the applicant doesn't have to-
That's fine.
All right, I have a question. Under the medical aesthetics, is there a licensing procedure that qualifies a person to do medical aesthetics in, in opposition to or different from tattooing?
That would be a good question for the applicant, but I do believe there is some type of certification that they would get.
Yeah, I think that was one of the ones we were going to ask when she steps up.
Oh, okay.
Good question.
Good question. Any other discussion on the board? All right, ma'am, if you want to step back up? All right, you want to go ahead and address your question first, go ahead.
Sure. Under the medical aesthetics versus tattooing in general, are there medical requirements that you have to have in order to do the medical aesthetics?
In the state of North Carolina, it is what's understood to be an unregulated state. By that doesn't mean that you don't have to be certified, you do have to go through courses and receive a certification. There are different regulations pertaining to body art and then pertaining to any other type of permanent cosmetics. In North Carolina, you can take specifically eyeliner or microblading or areola tattooing, you can do one particular and not do another. I personally have attended more than 210 hours of instruction and ran a permanent cosmetic school in Virginia Beach. So I am licensed, one of only 12 people licensed in the state of Virginia to even do the type of tattooing that I do.
Okay.
Okay? May I also address what you were talking about with the permanent cosmetics and body art?
Sure.
In North Carolina and almost every other state, if you are a licensed professional in a state that does license or in an unregulated state, someone that does body art, you are allowed to do permanent cosmetics. So you are absolutely right in that.
Correct.
And there are some wonderful tattoo artists that can do the work. However, I will say that the reason that I am asking for this is that I do not do body art specifically. So the wording is just, it is something that would have to be addressed in that, and in speaking with them, they had mentioned earlier, as, as it is listed, they had medical aesthetic tattooing. And I don't want anybody to be confused with aesthetics as in facials and that sort of thing. You cannot, in Currituck County, require that you are an esthetician, that is something that Jason Laurel and I had talked about. I am a licensed esthetician in three states, however, you cannot put that as a requirement, even though it is in the name, so I wanted to make sure nobody was confused with that either. Okay?
Okay.
Do you use anesthesia when you're doing the art?
You, you do use some anesthetic creams, yes, ma'am, and that is purely because you have so many pain receptors in the face that you don't necessarily have in other parts of the body, so just for comfort, but you are limited to the percentage that you can use.
But this is not just simply for your face, this is for any part of your body.
No, ma'am, even for the body parts, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for the applicant?
If you had to change the wording of the definition of the body art that we were speaking about, the very last line, how would you create that definition or change it so there would be less confusion between the body art definition and the medical aesthetics tattooing definition?
I think that I would just remove the restriction of not being able to do the permanent cosmetics and the body art, because they are legally able to do that.
So instead of, would it be reasonable to think that instead of saying does not include medical aesthetic tattooing, would it be better and make more sense to say, "And cosmetic tattooing is allowed," or something like that?
For, you could say, "Body art is decorative in nature, does not include medical aesthetic tattooing, with the exception of permanent cosmetics."
Cosmetics.
Would that be a reasonable definition?
They can, they can also do the, the medical aesthetic tattooing, they can do any of it.
They can do any of it.
They can, because when you become a, a tattooist, a regular full-body art tattooist, you have more than 1,500 hours as a, an apprentice. There, there literally are no one who goes to any school for it. You do apprenticeships, and they do 1,500 hours. I have done 210. There are so many different types of body art, too, there are watercolor, there is lettering, there are literally hundreds of different types that they do, and so they are fully qualified to do it. Most women are not going to go in there for that sort of thing, but, and-
So in reality, what we're doing is we're placing a restriction on you-
Yes.
So that you can work in a more broad area.
Yes.
And we shouldn't be placing any restrictions on the body art side of it.
Exactly, and in all honesty, I don't know that you legally can, and I, I don't want to confuse anybody with that-
I get that, yeah.
And have someone come back and, you know, cause a problem.
So maybe just taking out that last sentence completely from body art?
Yes.
That would, that would suffice.
That makes you question the validity of the last line in the medical aesthetics tattooing as well. If one, if one person can do it, either one, then-
Well, that's the thing, you're not doing scarification, branding, subdermal implant, scalping, shaping, and body painting.
I do not.
Right, so I'm, I'm okay with leaving that one like that, since we've made a definition for body art, really the restriction is on you.
It is.
Yeah, so.
And I, and I honestly prefer it that way. There are too many people out there who are performing different types of body art and also permanent cosmetics that are unlicensed, uncertified, and have absolutely no clue in what they are doing. And I actually have had people argue with me that you can do, say for instance, microblading, which is the eyebrows, you can do that with a scalpel. No, you cannot. If you are doing that with a scalpel, you are doing it wrong and you are more than likely going to scar their face irreparably. There's too many things that are just, that can go wrong.
Are you intending to do this out of your home?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. I, I am absolutely against that, to be very honest with you. I've seen too many kitchen shops, is what they're called, set up, and you have to be so very careful with this, it has to be in a very sterile environment, you have to take classes and be certified in your bloodborne pathogens, I have to have CPR, I have to have first aid, I have to be licensed through the, or not licensed, but certified through the health department here, and I am very, very funny about that, I think everybody should, and I don't think it's strict enough, to be honest with you.
Do you have a place where you intend to open a business?
Yes, ma'am, I have two places that I am looking at. I had looked at a third location, which was actually inside of a medical facility, and then- then found out that the, the doctor there had a photographer in, in-house. And I was like, no, that's, I fall under HIPAA laws. I'm, I'm not, no.
Yeah.
I'm, can't be in there with someone like that.
Are they in Moayok?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
So we're taking out the one sentence under the body art, the last sentence, but we're leaving in the last sentence on the medical aesthetics?
Sure, because then that restricts the medical aesthetics-
To not doing body art.
To not doing any of that stuff, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Not unless you have any further questions for me.
Okay.
I did bring some pictures, if anybody wanted to see anything after the meeting. You know, that's totally up to you, if you're interested in what it is that I do and want to know more.
I think we'll probably wait till after the meeting, and we'll take a look at the pictures.
That's, that's up to you. I, I have some there to just the face, too, I'm sorry.
Actually, we discussed it earlier. I think we probably all want to take a look real quick. But at this point, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And at this time, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I got to read? I move to approve PB 1811 with the findings of fact and stack, staff recommendations included in the case with the following correction, to remove the, the last sentence under body art. Delete that sentence completely and end the paragraph just saying body painting. And other than that, leave, leaving it as proposed.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to PB 12, sign illumination. This is a text amendment to modify Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 5, Development Standards, to address sign lighting. And the presenter is Lori LaCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the third text amendment before you tonight. A little background on this, as our UDO is written today, we do not allow internally, or essentially, we do not allow internally illuminated signs. Last year, when the sign ordinance was updated to bring our sign ordinance in compliance with the Supreme Court decision of Reed versus the town of Gilbert, Arizona, there was language that was changed in the sign ordinance. And, and that language, under illumination for signs, the language is added, sign lighting shall be full cutoff. And, and, and looking at our lighting ordinance, full cutoff, you really have to direct the lighting downward without any, any light going upwards or to the sides, et cetera. All the lighting should be directed downwards. Your typical internally illuminated sign, think about as, as you, as you drive up and down 158, 168, Sonic and McDonald's and Dollar General, those internally illuminated signs, when the lights come out, they, they, they cast upwards. And to do that, they would have to put some type of cap or shield on these internally illuminated signs. So we think, staff thinks this is something that just, it happened, it got put in accidentally, or this change, unintended consequence, like Mr. Craddock was saying earlier. So, because that's, it's a little bit restrictive, especially on the mainland, for an externally illuminated sign to actually have extra, a cap or a shield to keep that light directed down. So, so in that, we've changed Section 5, Development Standards, Chapter 5, subsection 5.12, signs, to clarify the illumination of signs. So we are adding, we're changing the language to specify that external sign lighting shall be full cutoff lens. So that the full cutoff lens is a reference back to how we reference it in the, in the definitions. But so that, those are signs that will be illuminated, people are essentially going to shine lights on them, and that would be the only type of illuminated sign that are allowed on the Outer Banks. But internally illuminated signs, other than window signs, shall only locate on lots on the mainland, Knott's Island and Gibbs Woods. So we're allowing internally illuminated signs back on the mainland. This is something that after the, the change with the sign ordinance, we don't believe, we believe this is an unintended consequence. After looking the minutes and reviewing the meetings of both Planning Board and Board of Commissioners, this is an unintended consequence that, that came with that sign update. So I'll take any questions.
Any questions for staff from the board?
I will say that it was a massive overhaul at the time after this landmark court case, when we changed our sign ordinance. It was very complicated, and it's, it was definitely possible to have had an unintended consequence happen because of the complexity of all of that.
Yes. That was, that was not an easy task, so.
Any other questions, staff? All right, we have Mr. Roger Ambrose listed to speak on this. Mr. Ambrose, if you can come up and state your name and address.
Roger Ambrose, Camden, North Carolina. Mr. Chairman, the board members, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak on it. And that's exactly what I planned to talk on, was the wording as it is for internally illuminated signage. So I guess what you're saying is they're going to allow internally lighted signs to be reinstated on the mainland?
If this, if this passes, yes.
This is staff's recommendation, and then the Planning Board will make their recommendation.
Yeah, the down lighting, as we call it, external is okay. That's, it's not been addressed, but this is internal lighted signs. We applied for one just recently, and it was turned down because of that. And I understand, I guess, the Dollar General, same thing, it's turned down. These are signs that are standard all over, everywhere. So I really don't see any problem with going back to internally lighted signs. They, they kind of, they don't focus. The beam is just kind of a glow. So some of the externalized bulb may, may have more of a beam focusing out, and this is kind of a glow. So I really think it should be allowed back in there to have internally illuminated signs. They've normally been fluorescent lighted, and the trend now is kind of going to LEDs, which is probably a less direct, less concentrated light. It's also designed to be less power consuming, and the lifespan is to be much longer. So hopefully, things, as they improve, they'll keep getting better and work better. But I would recommend it, allow internally lighted signs as it were. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Mr. Ambrose?
Thank you, Mr. Ambrose.
Any other comments or concerns? All right, the, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve 18, PB 18-12, Currituck County text amendment with no changes, just as it's written, as it is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Land Use Plan and other applicable county adopted plans. It's not in conflict with any provision of this ordinance or the county code of ordinances, and it is required by changing conditions, and it addresses a demonstrated community need, and it will not harm the public interest.
And I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion passes unanimously. Are there any announcements?
Be sure to get your parking passes for the beach.
Where do you get them?
At the visitor center next to the ABC store, or at the Moayok Visitor Center. You have to show a registration card and insurance.
Can I get one for my motorcycle, too?
I don't think so.
Why not?
Because I don't think the motorcycle will go up on the beach, will it?
Just fine.
I don't know about the motorcycle. We didn't address that.
That's a separate hearing. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have some motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.